This meeting is called to order. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the best law with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Doctor?
Here.
City Manager Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Dean?
Here.
Commissioner Logan?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
We have received the amendments from January 24th, 2022, and February 28th, 2022. Do we have any corrections, additions? Then the minutes will be accepted. Presentation, introduction of the new Parks Director. Director, oh, Director Smith, you're online, geez. Director Smith, Manager Burton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm thrilled to welcome Doug Smith to the Helena team. Doug has an impressive background, which includes a wealth of experience in parks and recreation facilities, programming and management, and he's going to be a tremendous asset to our team. And with that, Mayor, I'd like to invite Doug to take the floor and introduce himself. Doug will begin his responsibilities with the City of Helena on September 19th.
Oh, so he's not?
No, he's online.
Okay. You have the floor, Mr. Smith.
Okay, thank you very much for that introduction, Tim, and can everybody hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
All right, all right, new laptop, just working the bugs out. No, I'm super excited, as the letter read, to begin this journey in an incredible place. We visited twice, or I visited twice, and only Tim, and I think Renee knows this, but for the last 15 years, I've been coming out to Montana for skiing. So the state has had my heart for trips for, you know, 12 to 15 years, because we have friends who built a house on the Bridger Pass in Park County. And so, no, we did Bridger Bowl, Big Sky, and bounce around, and then for this opportunity to come up, go through all the steps, and to ultimately be offered the position is very humbling, and I'm very excited to begin.
Thank you. I will hope you were mentioned, Grid Divide, soon.
I will write that down.
Okay, welcome, Doug. Anybody want to?
Mr. Mayor, I would just add, welcome. Thank you for being on, even though you haven't actually started yet. We appreciate you taking the time tonight, and really looking forward to meeting you in person when you get here.
Thank you, Admiral.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I will echo what Commissioner Dean said. We're looking forward to having you out here. Safe travels, enjoy the journey, and hopefully soon, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, welcome, Mr. Smith. I do have one question for you. I see a musical instrument hanging on the wall behind you.
Oh, yes.
Do you play it?
I have to admit, I'm in Michigan right now at a very good friend's house in his basement. So everything you see, you know, he does not play it. It's wall art, but I did play the trumpet.
All right, well, thank you and welcome, and we look forward to your arrival.
Thanks, Mr. Smith. Manager, you done?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Look forward to Doug and his arrival and start on the 19th. I also would like to say that it's been very nice and appreciate very much Mr. Langsathers' work as interim parking director. He's done a wonderful job in the interim, and he'll continue in that role until the 19th. So I'd like to just publicly thank Brad as well.
Thank you, yes. We also want to thank Brad for stepping up and taking the reins. We appreciate all that you did, Brad. Thank you. And consent agenda. Fiscal year 2022, carryover requests to budget year 2022.
Mayor, I recommend approval of the consent agenda with one typo caveat that Zach is going to explain to the commission.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. If you look at page, there's a couple of corrections that were made. If you look at page 27 in your packet, and the second one from the top, it's talking about the hazmat sustainment rollover funds for the fire department. It looks like the requested recommended carryover was for $16,686. That was after looking at their stuff within this morning, we found out that that was more than what is actually available. So that has been changed to $10,257 that you can see right there in that packet.
Would you repeat that, please?
Yeah, it should say $10,257 for that recommended carryover for that line item. And then, let's see, I think there was one more for fire as well. I appreciate the administrator, Stephanie, Stephanie, for helping me figure this stuff out today. And this one is on page 29 in your packet, and it's the third one down for, it's for one of their vehicles they're trying to purchase. They already spent $2,100 in there. So there was a miscommunication as far as the revenue, where it was received, if it was going to be received in that fund or the general fund, and it in turn impacted their budget. But after some research and communications, if you look at the bottom line there, the recommended carryover is $39,929, and we changed that to actually be the full carryover amount of $60,900, because that is what is remaining for that project number. The total balance, if you look to the left right there, it says the division total. Previously, it said $107,000 and 929, or $107,000, and it should say, which you guys have in front of you, $424,929. So it does, so they do have the enough to roll over those requested amounts. But other than that, everything is straightforward. These were projects, majority of them were projects or contracts that were signed in fiscal year 22 that didn't get started yet for whatever the reason may be, whether it was parts couldn't come in or couldn't get businesses in to start working on some of the stuff. And so we're just asking to get it approved to roll all this stuff over so we can get this stuff taken care of.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, just really briefly, can you maybe just explain the purpose of having carryovers? I know when I first started, I was very confused about, you know, having tens of millions of dollars that just was already approved but hadn't have been spent, and then getting some questions. So for the general public who's listening, can you just explain the purpose of adopting these carryovers?
I'm going to do my best, since I just started too. So thank you, Commissioner Dean, Mayor, Commissioners. So my understanding of the carryover process is these were funds that were already allocated and appropriated previously at the beginning of last fiscal year, last September, October, whenever you guys adopted the budget. And this stuff was already appropriated, and then from my understanding is if it wasn't used last fiscal year, we could roll it over into the following fiscal year and get all these projects and contracts taken care of.
Perfect. Thank you.
And it could be a host of reasons why they weren't used.
Yep, exactly. Whether they, the RFP took, you know, we couldn't get some construction business to work on the project or anything like that. A contract was signed, but we're waiting for our vehicles to be built, or all sorts of reasons, so.
You bet. Thank you. So any public comments on this item? Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Getting the Commissioners and City Manager Burton, and I just wanted to add that in the budget resolution, there are several criteria that can allow for an item to be carried over from one fiscal year to another. I think Zach highlighted it nicely, that if it was a particular project that had been pre-appropriated, and for whatever reason that project had to, you know, didn't come to fruition, we've had a lot of, you know, supply shortages, labor shortages in the last fiscal year that have delayed a lot of either equipment purchases or projects moving forward. And out of that cri, you know, so there is definitive criteria, but is eligible for a carryover into the next fiscal year. We just don't carry over like supplies not used, or, you know, things like that. Those things are not eligible for carryovers, specifically planned projects or contracts that weren't able to be completed by the end of the fiscal year, that we work with the department heads to carry them over to the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Any other public comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to accept the consent agenda, item A, fiscal year 22, carryover requests to budget year 2023 with the changes outlined by Zach Smith in his presentation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Communications proposals from Commissioners. Commissioners, what say you? We'll move along. Reporter of the City Attorney, Attorney Doctor?
Mayors, Commissioners, I have, Mayor, Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
I was looking for the other one. City Manager?
Mayor and Commissioner, I have nothing to report this evening.
Communications from Helena Citizens Council. Representative Moore's? Do we have her online?
Yes, I'm here. We are looking forward to you looking at our proposal for daycares, and we are working on outreach, so we have better outreach to our neighborhood districts, and hopefully we'll have some better, and not better, but more recommendations in the future. That's about all we have going on right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Representative Moore's. Regular items. A, considered an ordinance adopted by reference to current and future state adopted additions of the International Building Code, the International Residential Code, the International Energy Conservation Code, the International Existing Building Code, the Uniform Plumbing Code, the National Electrical Code, the International Mechanical Code, the International Fuel-Gas Code, and the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. Director Brink and/or Mack?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Who would you rather meet, or kid? I'm just teasing. So reading that is probably easier than us taking those big stack of books in front of you. I do want to make an apology to you, the rest of the commission and the public for omitting the copy of the final version of this ordinance document in the packet. That was an oversight on my part. I'll claim me being a newbie. So, but I take responsibility for that, and I think working with Danae, we've got copies for the public as well. So, but rest assured, nothing has changed since we talked about this last Wednesday at the admin meeting, other than we took the actual edits out of the ordinance, make it clean version. So yes, before you tonight is an ordinance adopting by reference those stated codes. As we mentioned at the admin meeting and business going forward, we will not open up the city code any longer to adopt the state codes. We're going to do it one time, one time only, moving forward. So whenever the state decides to adopt the latest codes, typically it's on a three-year cycle, but it's not always been, then we don't have to open up the city code to do that. Tonight will be considered first pass. After this evening, we'll have a 30-day adopting review period, and those copies of the codes in this ordinance will be with the clerk of the commission's office for the public to review. And then we'll have a public hearing and final pass on the 26th of September to wrap it up. And once that's done or been official, Ms. Mack will let the state know that we now fully enforce the state adopted codes. And Ms. Mack is here if you have questions for her, and I'm obviously available to answer questions as well, so.
Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve an ordinance adopting by reference the current and future state adopted additions of the International Building Code, the International Residential Code, the International Energy Conservation Code, the International Existing Building Code, the Uniform Plumbing Code, the National Electric Code, the International Mechanical Code, the International Fuel-Gas Code, and the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
I want to go back to Commissioner's discussion, and would you, I see we have a new employee, would you, Madam Clerk, introduce our new employee to the community?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. I'd like to introduce the newest member of the City Clerk's office and the commission office. His name is Curtis Kotecki. I'm very excited to have him onboard. The City Manager has made the records digitization and records management project a fiscal year budget priority. Curtis has an IT background, which is very exciting, because I do not. We're going to be working this next year very diligently on giving the public access to their records, and Curtis is going to be instrumental to all of that. Plus, I'm happy to not be alone anymore, because somebody can listen to me talk. So everybody stop by and say hi. I've introduced him to the commission. Commissioner Reed is on this evening. We have not had the ability to meet or have Curtis and Commissioner Reed meet in person, but look forward to that, maybe tomorrow. So, thank you.
Thank you. Curtis, you have anything you want to say?
It's just a pleasure to be here. Thank you for introducing me, and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I would just echo your welcome. Very thrilled to have you in the office. I think this is actually one of the projects that I think we're all most excited about, especially in providing more access to the public, but we also have the funnest office, so.
Oh, I'm not going there.
I'm not either, but, Mr. Mayor, if I might, I will echo the echo of the welcome. So I look forward to meeting you in person tomorrow. Thanks.
I would just like to say welcome to Curtis as well, so nice to meet you.
All right, moving along. Public hearings. Consider a resolution granting a K-12 educational facility using the R2 residential zoning district for a property with legal description of parcel one, tract A1 of the Dean Minor subdivision of the Bradford addition to the City of Helena and more particularly described on the COS filed under document number 493013B, records of Lewis and Clark County, Montana, on property with the street address of 1900 Florrie Street and generally occupies a tract of land that fronts on Lynde Street, is south of the property that occupies the southwest corner of Lynde and Stewart Street, and it is to the north and east of PUD 10. Director Brink and/or Planner Alvarez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mayor and Commission. I am Michael Alvarez. I'm a planner with the Community Development Department, and tonight I'll be presenting the St. Andrews CUP. So this is a consideration of a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a K-12 educational use in the R2 residential zoning district for the property with the legal description just read by the mayor. And the property is here highlighted in red, and it's yellow and outlined in red, rather. The arrow points to the approximate location that St. Andrews School wants to place three new mobile classroom units. They'll be on a permanent foundation. They are temporary units. The expansion of the buildings on the property is what will require the CUP. Currently, they're legal non-conforming, having been annexed with the use that they have. In an R2 district, you, a school needs a CUP to operate, so in getting a conditional use permit, it will cover the entirety of the school, and it is the expansion of the facilities that is forcing them to come under a CUP. So at the bottom there is a 3D representation of one of the buildings. Currently, this proposal isn't, is really to sort of house an expansion that's already occurred, where some of the student body is currently going to school at Carroll College for part of the week. So they've outgrown their current facility, but the intention here isn't really to add more students. They sort of already have slightly too many students is how it was framed to me. A K-12 educational facility, it's fairly self-explanatory, but I'll just go through here. It's a place for preschools, elementary, junior high, or high schools, colleges, and vocational schools. And the R2 residential zoning district is meant to provide for residential dwellings and limited non-residential development that protects and enhances the residential nature of the area. The site plan that's provided in your packets and is available here tonight is being tweaked a little bit for fire access. Lou Antonek is still making reviews. Most of that is happening underneath the building permit. The big changes just that I'm aware of so far, and again, they haven't had their final review, there's a tree sort of on an island in the middle of the parking lot there that's getting removed, and some of those sheds and swings at the bottom of the screen are getting moved towards the, towards the west there. That's going to allow a turnaround. I'll get into the recommendations for the conditions that are, the zoning commission has put forward as recommendations on this. But some of these items are still being worked out. Zoning commission was just a month ago. Ultimately, though, this is a CUP to continue the use that they currently enjoy, and as far as traffic and fire is concerned, it's a matter of getting them on there safely and through the building permitting process. So here is a look at the modulators, just to give you an idea of what they're moving on to the property. The city has allowed for the unusual step in these cases, and I'm sure that's your favorite word, is unusual in these cases, but to allow these modular units to be moved on for the process, during this process, the CUP process. The reason being is to allow them to be there for the start of the school year. They are doing so at their own financial risk. Obviously, if the conditional use permit is rejected, they will need to remove these at their own financial risk, and that was presented to them as part of the agreement to allow them to move it on and move forward with the building permit. And here's a picture of the Dean Minor subdivision. They occupy that southern parcel, which is the larger of the two, and it also includes a small bit of the tract A1 there over on the side. So it's a little over 3.7 acres. So evaluation criteria for conditional use permits are covered under city code Title 11, Chapter 3, Section 4. So the standards are set by, in Section A, and the factors in B are how the city is to evaluate, or, I'm sorry, those are the evaluation criteria, the evaluation factors by which we see whether or not the criteria of A has been met, and then C just simply states that any single factor is, gives the city the right to deny the CUP or to impose conditions on the permit. So findings. St. Andrews has a use that is currently legal non-conforming, having been annexed with the use type K-12 educational, and it is the expansion of this use type in the R2 residential zoning district that requires the CUP. The St. Andrews lacks sidewalks and also has non-conforming parking lots that the city would like to see brought into conformance. However, the city recognizes the temporary nature of the proposed expansion and would like to see the property brought into conformance when a permanent plan is brought forward for the facilities. And to ensure that these temporary buildings remain temporary, the city is proposing a moratorium on them of three years to allow for fundraising for permanent facilities. And essentially here, it's, we don't necessarily want them laying concrete or doing a whole bunch of upgrades if that's where they want to put their building when they do expand in a more permanent fashion. As far as what they're proposing, it won't require any variances. The zoning commission and public comment recognize that the students will need protection from cars, even if we're not asking for the pedestrian facilities to be installed at this time, and their recommendation was to install a school zone. To that end, they've done a traffic impact study that was requested from transportation. We just got that back on Friday and are still reading that. Sorry. I'm missing the word. I apologize. We're still going through that.
Still reviewing.
Thank you. I do reviews all day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we are, is still under review. And they were supposed to have their review from Fire Marshal Lou Antonek this morning. However, he was investigating a fire all day, so that's scheduled for tomorrow morning. So I apologize, I don't have that result either. So this was publicly noticed in the Helena IR. Neighbor notices were mailed to adjacent property owners, and a sign was placed on the premise. That was done out to 150 feet. That is our standard. And public comments that were collected for the proposal were attached to your meeting materials. We just received the three comments. So the zoning commission recommended approval of a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a K-12 educational facility use in the R2 residential zoning district for a property with the legal description of parcel one and tract A1 of the Dean Minor subdivision of the Bradford addition to the City of Helena and more to particularly described on the certificate of survey filed under document number 493013B, records of Lewis and Clark County, Montana. The property being addressed 1900 Florrie Street and generally occupying a tract of land that fronts on Lynde Street is south of the property that occupies the southwest corner of Lynde and Stewart Streets and is to the north and east of PUD number 10, with the following conditions: that temporary buildings be used on the site for no more than three years from installation; that temporary buildings are not replaced by new or any additional temporary buildings, so swapping out the modulators would not count; that a school zone be instituted along the frontage of Lynde Street at owner's expense; that the parking lots be brought into conformance with the construction of any new permanent buildings or additions to existing buildings that increase the total gross floor area of buildings on the lot, parcel or tract by more than 25%. buildings on the lot, parcel or tract by more than 25% as calculated by the existing permanent structures on the property. And that the temporary buildings should not have their square footage used in that calculation. And that sidewalks be installed with the construction of any new permanent buildings or additions to existing buildings that increases the total gross floor area of buildings on the lot, parcel or tract by more than 25% as calculated by the existing permanent structures on the property. The temporary buildings should not have their square footage used in that calculation. The building permit must be submitted for within one year. They've already submitted for the building permit. And that the, the conditions be met within one year of approval and obviously that the parking lots being brought into conformance is attached to the three-year moratorium on the buildings.
Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor? I have a couple. So of the, for those who received the public notice that was mailed to, do you know how many households that was of, that are in that 150 feet?
I don't. I can ballpark it at about 30.
Okay. And I guess, so we know that the, I guess, has there been any comments back from some of those folks in the neighborhood who are concerned about pedestrian child safety? I guess within this interim because once the permanent structure appears to be built, it sounds like they'll be addressing more of those issues. Do you know if their neighbors feel like this is a sufficient remedy for the interim?
Mayor and commission, I, all of the comments, I would say, were, were mostly concerned or were primarily concerned with parking traffic and pedestrian safety. Is this sufficient in the interim? The city would like to see all of its standards and complete streets met. And it's so is not having pedestrian facilities adequate? No. How, however, this is the, the compromise that we were hoping that we could, we could broach with the school to eventually get those installed in a way that was going to fit with future expansion plans for them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor? So Mr. Alvarez, if I understood correctly, any concerns about emergency access or emergency services as they relate to the school will be taken care of during the building and permitting therein?
Correct. Mayor and commission, Commissioner Logan. They, so they have already made some of those changes that Fire Marshal Lou Antonick has recommended. I don't necessarily want to be able to speak to all of them, but one of them is they're not going to be, they're not going to allow parking in the street anymore to allow the ladder truck to go and have outriggers. I can give it, I'll be able to give a more complete summary after I have his comments back. But you know, there, there's the new turnaround area at the, at the rear of the school so that it will accommodate the ladder truck, which is the, the largest truck in the fleet. And I believe they're also installing a new fire hydrant on the facility. There's, there's one existing, but doesn't have sufficient fire flows. So that's, that's being swapped. And the applicant probably who is here today would be able to speak to how far along they are with the process. It's my understanding that they've been making pretty swift process since the zoning commission meeting a month ago.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Thank you. Do we have any public comments? Okay. I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to accept a resolution granting a K through 12 educational facility use in the R2 residential zoning district for a property with the legal description of parcel one and tract A1 of the Dean Minor subdivision of the Bradford addition to the city of Helena. And more particularly described on the city certificate of survey filed under document number 493013/B, records of Lewis and Clark County, Montana, on property with the street address of 1900 Flowery Street and generally occupies a tract of land that fronts on Linden Street, is south of the property that occupies the southwest corner of Linden and Stewart Streets and is to the north and east of PUD number 10.
Second?
It's been, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Do we need to include the?
A question. Do we need to include the conditions in that motion?
Yeah.
Thank you. With the, with the conditions that were outlined by the zoning commission.
Okay, you want a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Okay. C. Charlie. Consider an ordinance amending the official zoning. Nope, sorry. B. Consider a resolution creating special improvement lighting district number 398 in the city of Helena, Montana. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Tonight, I have before you a resolution for your consideration to create a special improvement lighting district on Ridgewood Lane. The city received a, a letter petition from the property owners on that street requesting the creation of the lighting district, which would add three lights to the distributed, you know, amongst the seven property owners in the district. After I had received the petition, I reached out to the Northwestern Energy, who then provides and calculates the cost of including the infrastructure and the ongoing electricity costs of the three lights. That petition included $75.47 per month, per light. That, along with the administrative fee with the city and the electricity costs are then calculated by the city to get a per, per square foot, per property cost. And that calculated cost was about $2,781.96 a year for those three lights. That's 0.04017 per square foot of property. As you can see in the packet, I did provide you what the cost per property would be, both for the first year and the continuing years thereafter. These are estimated costs. The electricity costs do go up every year and the lighting districts are recalculated every year with their, with their annual cost per square foot. I found that these costs, the costs that Northwestern Energy provided were a little high, so it took me a little bit longer to reach out to them, understand why it costs more than some of the other lighting districts in the, in the city. And it was because the, they need to go in and dig up and, you know, an already established street area and put the infrastructure in and the lights. I did notify all seven property owners and it was notified in the independent record. We received two letters back from two of the property owners indicating their desire not to move forward with the lighting district, indicating that it was cost prohibitive to them. And, but because they didn't represent the majority, I brought back this resolution for your consideration to consider establishing the lighting district for the seven property owners. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor? Ms. Danielson, did we receive, even if it wasn't a petition, did we receive any other communication from the other five property owners?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Well, I take that back. There was one property owner that kept initiating the creation on behalf of the other property owners, but that was the only communication that I received.
Okay.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Commissioner. Any public comments? Sure, ma'am.
First of all, I broke a tooth playing with the grandkids, so I'm really vain about this, so please excuse me. Feeling rugged. I'm one of the homeowners on Ridgewood Way and I, I really do object to this. It is quite high. And I don't know about many of you people, but I live in a medium income neighborhood and I'm on a very budget. I got my house through the GI Bill, through the military, and my pensions are through the military and social security. And I, this, this, this is a lot of freaking money for my, for me as a consumer and living in that neighborhood. I, I'd like to know why the energy people are not here. But I want, also want to know, how come that you go into a neighborhood, you build this subdivision? You, we got telephone, we, we got the lighting, we got lights all over the place. Then it gets down to my neighborhood and then neighborhood over here, neighborhood over here, and it just suddenly stopped? Why, why did they stop 20 years ago? And why didn't the community get, I just bought this two years ago. I just got my home. And why didn't the community come together back then? But anyway, it didn't happen and here we are in 2022. And it's very expensive and everything's happening. We don't know what's coming this winter. We don't know what's happening in our United States of America. We don't know what's happening with Ukraine and Russia and China and the costs that we have to put out for food and housing and utilities and clothes and all the necessities on our budgets. And then lights. I just wanted to be nice in the neighborhood when that one person came forward with this petition for these. Usually I'm on the ball and when they say sign a petition for something, I ask what's it going to cost me before I sign. It was like, hey, there's a wooden horse in the neighborhood. Why don't you sign? Yeah, I'll sign for that wooden horse, you know, the Trojan horse thing. Well, anyway, I immediately sent in a letter because I, I, I just didn't like this situation. And I, I opposed, I opposed it right away. And I still oppose it because I can't afford this. My budget is as it is. And so anyway, I just want you to know that you have my petition was, my letter that says I'm not for this. So anyway, that's why I'm here to let you know. Like I said, why didn't they do this years ago when things were cheaper? And then suddenly like this, we're going to do it. You sign a petition, days later, it's a resolution and we're going to do it. I, I just, no, I, I can't afford this and I just can't. Anyway, my name is Victoria Howard. I live at 113 Ridgewood Lane and I can't afford this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor? I do have a hand raised online. Cameron Sapp.
You have a camera, what? You have the floor? Hi.
This is Cameron Sapp. I'm the owner of 104 Ridgewood.
Did we lose him?
That was my fault. I'm sorry, Mr. Sapp. Go ahead.
Gotcha. How much did you hear?
Nothing.
Okay. I, my name's Cameron Sapp. I'm the owner of 104 Ridgewood Lane and I'd also like to oppose the creation of the special lighting district based purely on the cost. I also found it to be kind of cost prohibitive for three lights as well. I guess I would be possibly willing to give some consideration if we were able to join the adjoining lighting district. I don't know how city code works in that regard. I don't know if it's cheaper to join one or if that's even possible, but as it stands for the creation of a lighting district, I would like to oppose that based on cost.
Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you for your time.
Do we have any other public comments? Any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no other public comment online.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question of Director Danielson quickly?
Go ahead.
Director Danielson?
Question. Sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Oh, sorry. I'll, I'll be brief. When this came up the last time, we were all a little bit, I think, taken aback at how expensive, you know, this lighting district was. I think I want to make it clear that we aren't the ones who determined this. We just are kind of the pass through. Would it be possible, and I, I don't necessarily want to delay this for, you know, because the, the original petition did, you know, meet our requirements and we sent out the, you know, your right to protest, but given that it is only seven households, I'm wondering if it would be possible if we could get just a tally of where the rest of the neighborhood is. I know I frequently get mail where I'll look and say, oh, I'll get to it, you know, in a week or so. And it is the middle of summer and things seem to, you know. People are not always on top of it in the middle of summer. And so I'd like to give folks the benefit of the doubt, given that it is such a significant amount of money and only seven households. Is something like that possible? And there might not be interest on the commission in doing that, which is understandable, but given that the cost and it's only seven households, I just want to make sure we're, you know, dotting all our i's and crossing our t's.
Thank you, Commissioner Dean and Mayor. So I will let you know that we sent out not only, we sent out two letters to the residents and we published the public hearing four times in the newspaper. It was supposed to come before August 8th and then it got postponed. And so we sent out additional communication to the property owners to, to ask them to, to, to protest. The statute doesn't require that we get yays. It only requires that we get letters of protest. I'm not opposed to, you know, trying to contact those property owners. I don't have their phone numbers. I, it would have to be again by mail. Again, that's the only way I have of communicating with the property owners. So we would have to send out yet another letter of communication asking them to either vote, but that's technically not how the statute reads. The statute reads that if, if they want to protest, they have 15 days to do so from the time they got notification. And if they don't, it comes before the commission for your consideration. And I did want to address Mr. Sapp's question about whether or not I considered bringing them into the lighting district that's adjacent. And so because of the cost, this would have been a 15% increase to the rest of the district. And it, that would, that, that would have had to gone through the same process. It's a major modification. Anything over 3%, that goes above 3% of the, the, the cost of the assessment for the property owners is considered a major, a major amendment and we have to go through this whole process again. So I, I would recommend that we just follow the statute.
Right.
And either, you know, consider approving or consider denying the lighting district. In the case that the commission does not approve the lighting district, then it can't come up before the commission for another six months if we receive another petition.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think you just answered the question I was planning to ask, just for the benefit of, in general, when you are, when there are new districts and one's adjacent, what is the process for considering incorporation? Do we, do we look at the above 3% threshold? Is there a way in general to make these more efficient so that we don't have these tiny little districts with very high cost, a small number of housing? If you could just give an overview of that process, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed and Mayor. Yes, I did. I think that was my first route was to incorporate these folks into the rest of the lighting district with a 15% increase to their assessments. In addition to the increase that they're receiving this year, just through the, the fact that the electricity costs were going up, it could potentially have increased some property owners well over 25, 30% of their current assessment. We can certainly, we can certainly go that. We can certainly, we can certainly go that route if I receive another commission. And then I can, I can, you know, go through the whole process again with, with adjoining. But I, I think that, for whatever reason, and, and again, Northwestern Energy would not provide a breakdown of the costs when I asked them for it. These particular three lights are very expensive. And adding them to the other district may result in the same, you know, protest, or it may not. It's, you know, I can certainly go that route. I'm not opposed to doing it. It's just going to take longer.
Thank you, Director Danielson, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for Ms. Danielson. You may have said this, but it might have slipped past me. But what is the threshold of protest for, say, how many property owners could have stopped this?
Over 50%. So there's three different criteria, but it's all a 50% threshold.
All right, because we're at, yeah, okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Mayor, may I address? One of the questions was how do you expand from Commissioner Reed, how do you expand the district? And I think Director Danielson addressed it, but just wanted to make it clear from the statute that in order for you to go down the road of asking for another petition, you would have to address this petition, including the protests right now. And then either receive another petition requesting the expansion of the district instead of a resolution creating a new district. And it is, as Director Danielson mentioned, the same process. It does invite protest, letters of protest at that point as well. And it would be an expanded district that all would be allowed to protest. And as Director Danielson said, perhaps that would come, perhaps it wouldn't. Commissioner Logan's question was about the ability to stop it altogether. And then, then if we received 50% of the owners or 50% of the value of the taxable property, the taxable value of the properties, there would be a prohibition on taking that forward by the commission for a year. So nothing could happen within a year then, instead of the six months, as Director Danielson mentioned, for the other circumstance. So just wanted to make that clear, and if you have other questions, let me know. But at a minimum, this one has to be dealt with before we go to expansion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney and Doctor. And what I want to see is that the processes were followed. There were four separate letters, as I learned, went through. And I don't see where we, there's a need to remake the rules or remake the process. The processes were followed. And it's left for us to say yea or nay. So we're at that point. I'll entertain a motion.
Ms. Reed, can I just ask one brief question about the petition?
Go ahead.
Ms. Danielson, I'm just looking at the petition right now, and it lists, so it lists all seven addresses. But on the 114 Ridge Wood, we don't have a signature. Was that separate?
Thank you, Commissioner Dean. No, there was no signature or protest received from that property owner.
Okay. But they were part of the original petition?
Well, they, I think what happened is one of the residents tried to get the signature of that property owner, but it was never.
But they still had enough to initiate this petition?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other final comments from the commission? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd make a motion to deny a resolution creating special improvement lighting district number 398 in the city of Helena, Montana.
Second, and I might have a comment real briefly. If this is something the neighborhood truly wants, I think I would encourage them to come back in six months and submit the petition again. I think that there was some lack of clarity as to what they were, some property owners were signing up for. This is, I mean, I couldn't afford this. So, and that, which I understand, and so I think, I want to be sure that, given that amount of money, that we, we really are, you know, looking out for everybody, and it is a majority that, that truly want it.
It is clear, Commissioner, that the majority wants it because out of seven, two. So, I mean, we can't impose our will on what we feel that we can afford or cannot afford. If others wanted to oppose this, they would have done exactly what the other two applicants did instead.
That's.
We're looking at two versus five imposing.
I, what I'm saying is that I don't know if, I mean, I don't know if it's clear that the petition would have made it to us if all the property owners knew what the original costs would have been.
You don't know that they don't know.
Well, we've had two people tell us that they didn't, which is why I, I would rather move forward with caution than not. Not that this can't come back and it can't be approved, but I also don't want to, you know, price people out of their houses either.
Director Danielson, how many notices did you send forward?
So each property owner got two letters, and then there were four public hearing notices in the independent record.
You can't tell me people didn't know.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'm slightly confused. I'm looking at the packet, at the petition. And I see the name on the petition, one of the names is the same name as someone who just spoke in opposition. So if I remove that one and I remove another one who spoke in opposition, that leaves four who are part of the petition in, in favor. Is that correct, instead of five?
Director Danielson.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. So the, the two property owners that submitted the letters of protest followed the statute, and they, they issued their letter of protest within the 15-day window that they were provided. Then Mr. Sapp just provided public comment, now coming forward, saying he's opposed to the lighting district. So yes, it's three out of the seven now that, that don't want to move forward with the district.
And I, thank you. I'm sorry. So if I'm understanding correctly, the, the question that Commissioner Dean asked with regard to the one that had no name associated with it, we don't know, we haven't heard anything more from that resident?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
No.
The motion carries three to one.
Okay. Consider an ordinance amending the official zoning map for the city of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 residential to R3 residential for properties legally described as a tract of land located in the southeast of northeast, Section 23 Township 10 North Range 4 West PMM, and all lots 1 through 8 of Block 171 of the Syndicate Addition to the City of Helena, as shown on COS 484404, City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. These properties are located at 1625 and 1655 Jocelyn Street and a tract of land in the southeast of the northeast of Section 23 Township 10 and Range 4W MPM. Described more fully in the Book of Deeds, Book of Deeds 271, page 770. This property is located on 1805 Jocelyn Street. Director Brink or Planner Alvarez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Commission. I am Michael Alvarez. I'm a planner with the Community Development Department. Item two is 1625, 1655, and 1805 Jocelyn Street. And considering an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Helena to change that zoning district from R2 to R3. The three properties are generally located at the southwest corner, corner of the Motor City Loop Road on the east side of Jocelyn Street, and the property where Piosta Avenue dead ends in Helena, Montana. These properties are located at the addresses I just read, and they are currently in an R2 zoning district. I want to pause right here and just have, to just look at this map. This zoning district as, as an R2, especially the, the part that's in Motor City, isn't really even on its own tract of land. It's, it's not a separate property from the rest of Motor City Loop. This zoning is a little bit more of an artifact from overlapping additions to the, to the city, it would appear. So applicant is seeking a zone change from R2 residential zoning district to the R3 residential zoning district. The rest of his neighbors on Piosta Street enjoy R3 zoning. The applicant is hoping to build residential multifamily by right. In the R2 zoning district, residential multifamily would require a conditional use permit for multi-unit residences. And we are including that sort of half lot of R2 that's in the Mobile City, Mobile Home Park, so that we're not creating an island of R2. But this was brought forward by the, the property owner at 1625 Jocelyn Street. The R1, R2 residential districts provide for residential dwellings and limited non-residential development that protects and enhances the residential nature of the area. And the R3 district provides for the development of a mixture of residential structures to serve varied housing needs and allows limited compatible non-residential uses. Zoning changes are handled under the MCA, Section 76, 2, 3, or 4. And I have sort of the findings effect for 2A, 2E on the A through E in the lower section here. Generally, the adequate provision of light and air is secured in all zones using setbacks and restrictions on building heights. R3 is expected to generate more trips than R2, but the property is not large enough to warrant further analysis. Our threshold there is 200 trips a day. The current zoning would require a CUP for the intended use, which is multi-dwelling residence. The city generally is looking to allow people to build by right. This area of the neighborhood is located on an arterial and partially included in two mobile home parks, a use permitted by right in an even higher density residential zone type, which is R4. The sea, the site would see its highest and best use with a zone type that allows for denser housing. And a couple pictures of the site. Sort of my own car blocking the view there. The 2019 Helena Growth Policy Land Use Chapter and Future Land Use Map identifies the neighborhood that the proposed rezone area is in as urban. Properties to the east of the neighborhood are similarly designated as urban. And the Mobile City property located in the county are to the west and are designated as mixed use by our future land use map. The growth policy also includes several goals and objectives applicable to the proposed zone change, including Objective 12, which is to promote and maintain development of diverse housing stock, and Objective 78, which is to encourage infill development on vacant and underutilized land within the city. The proposed zoning R3 would most squarely address the growth policy's direction to allow for more intensive residential development in the area. The change in zoning from R2 to R3 would allow for the development of all types of housing, and specifically multifamily residential. And R3 is also the predominant zoning district of both the Mobile Home Park and the other properties on Piosta Avenue there. This was legally noticed in the Helena IR. Neighbor notices were mailed to adjacent property owners, and a sign was placed on the premise. And no public comments were collected for this proposal. There were a couple of phone calls from Mobile City residents, just wondering if, well, there was one phone call from across the street, wondering if we were annexing. We are not. And another call that was basically wondering if their zoning was going to change, and their zoning was not going to change in this. So curiosity, no, no objections or, or support. The zoning commission recommended approval of an ordinance amending the official zoning map for the city of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 residential to R3 residential for properties legally described as a tract of land located in the southeast one corner of the northeast one corner of Section 23 Township 10 North Range 4 West PMM, and all of lots 1 through 8 of Block 171 of the Syndicate Addition to the City of Helena, as shown on Certificate of Survey 484404, City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and a tract of land in the southeast one corner of the northeast one corner of Section 23 Township 10 North Range 4 West MPM, described more fully in the Book of Deeds, Book 271, page 770.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission? Is there any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online. It appears no one in chambers is here to make public comment.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve an ordinance amending the official zoning map for the city of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 to R3 residential for properties legally described as a tract of land located in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 23 Township 10 North Range 4 West PMM and all of lots 1 through 8 of Block 171 of the Syndicate Addition of the City of Helena, as shown on COS 484404, City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and a tract of land in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 23 Township 10 North Range 4 West MPM, City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and described more fully in the Book of Deeds, Book 271, page 770.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Your, your motion recommendations are lengthy.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution levying an assessment on properties to recover amortized loan issued under the Residential Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy Loan Program Tax Year 2022. Budget Officer Zach Smith and/or Finance Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Just wanted to bring these forward. These were the resolutions of intention were approved back on July 25th. So we are just trying to get the resolution approved so we can get it out on the upcoming tax bill.
Comments or questions from the commission? Is there any public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve a resolution levying an assessment on properties to recover the amortized loans issued under the Residential Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy Loan Program for Tax Year 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option for the landfill monitoring and maintenance district for fiscal year 2023 and levying an assessment on all properties within the district.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. Same thing here. The assessment and the rates that we were going to charge has not changed from the previous fiscal year. So we are just. So we are just looking forward to get this approved and get this out as well.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the landfill monitoring and maintenance district for fiscal year 2023 and levying an assessment on all properties within the district.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to take public comment on that item?
Oh, we did not. Any public comments on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment.
Man, you just won't give me a hard time today.
No.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option for the special street lighting district for fiscal year 2023 and levying an assessment on all properties within the district.
Thank you again. Same thing here. Ms., Mrs. Danielson spoke about how the light districts change every year. They vary based off the costs and all that stuff. So here, what we have here is just the rates for the lighting districts to charge for this, for fiscal year 23.
Comments or questions from the commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk.
I have no public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Would consider a resolution specifying the assessment option for the special lighting districts for fiscal year 2023 and levying an assessment on all properties within the districts.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution levying an assessment on properties to recover the cost of removal of snow and ice from sidewalks on the adjacent public right-of-way.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. It looks like the city removes snow and ice from sidewalks adjacent to 11 properties during the winter season of 2021 and 2022. And this is just notifying the cost it was to remove it and the penalty for that as well.
Thank you. Just one question, what are the penalties?
I think it is a, it looks like a $50 penalty if it isn't paid within, let me look. I think it's a $50 penalty or 30% of costs if they fail to remove the snow and ice in a timely manner.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission?
Just that people should shovel their sidewalks.
Is there any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution levying an assessment on properties to recover the cost of removal of snow and ice from sidewalks on adjacent, adjacent public right-of-ways.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye, sorry.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option for collection and disposal of residential garbage and refuse for fiscal year 2023 and levying an assessment on all properties receiving residential solid waste collection.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is just the, again, like majority of the resolutions we have brought today. The rates have stayed the exact same from last fiscal year. So we were just looking for the commission's approval.
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions from the commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk.
I have no public comment on this item.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor. I would make a motion to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the collection and disposal of residential garbage and refuse for fiscal year 2023 and levying an assessment on all properties receiving residential solid waste collection.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution specifying assessment option for storm water utility service area for fiscal year 2022 and levying an assessment on all properties within the service area.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Again, no increases are requested for this fiscal year for the storm water utility service.
Comments or questions from the commission? Any public comments?
No comment online, Mr. Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the storm water utility service area for fiscal year 2023 and levying an assessment on all properties within the service area.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option for the special urban forest management district for fiscal year 2023 and levying an assessment on all properties within the district.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I promise I'm not trying to sound like a broken record, but there is no rate increases for this one as well for fiscal year 23.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
You can keep repeating that, we don't mind.
Can I just say same as the last one?
Yeah, that would be fun. How much more we got? I've got two more. Comments or questions from the commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk.
I have no public comment, Mr. Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the special urban forest management district for fiscal year 2023 and levying an assessment on all properties within the district.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
As per request of the city manager, I think we will be tabling item Kilo K. Any objection? None that I see. We'll move along. Consider a resolution specifying assessment option for the open space maintenance district number one for fiscal year 2023 and levying an assessment on all properties within the district.
Mayor and Commissioner, I spoke too soon. This one will have a slight change.
Are you kidding me?
I promise. Additional assessment for lots and properties with more than 2,222 square feet of impervious area last fiscal year, it was .00631 cents per square foot over that amount. And this year, due to increase of costs of operation cost, maintaining all the impervious area and the open space we have in Helena, we have requested to raise it from that .00631 cents to .00801 cents.
6301, okay.
It's like 27% increase.
Okay. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr.
Go ahead. Any public comments?
I have no public comment online, Mr. Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will approve a resolution, move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the open space maintenance district number one for fiscal year 2023 and levying an assessment on all pro, properties within the district.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option for the street maintenance and improvement district number one for fiscal year 2023, 2023, and levying an assessment on all properties within the district. Did we change? Because I see Zach name here, but then I see Director Knopki.
Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, you have the floor, Director.
To be witty, what he said, so.
Any questions from the commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk.
I have no public comment online, Mr. Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
We have a question for the director? No, go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the street maintenance and improvement district number one for fiscal year 2023 and levying an assessment on all properties within the district.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you, Director Knopki.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission on any topic? You have the floor. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no hands raised and I have no written public comment online.
All right. Any final comments from the commission? Going once? Meeting is adjourned.